Ladies and gentlemen, with joy in my heart I introduce to you The TIB main leader is someone that speeches and videos and words are so much mesmerizing That I'm giving all the thanks to be here, to be part of this program. And I'm honored to be the one on the device advising on stage at this time. Above of the demand that is careless, he has the goals and the crowd and the character To move like that to the next level. Omoge Ndejigoboré is integrity must survive. In honor, his father, and his now son. If we, if we are in a world where Saya is one who loves to escape it, To raise the land of Zalo, in the midst of the rocks, we struggle and struggle. He has both figures are our music, our stories and stories. Now we need a better way to let people know. Ladies and gentlemen, great, great TIB. For the device of our whole nation, for my country here.
Great, great TIB. A burning joy. Great TIB.
Yes.
Great TIB.
Yes.
In their particular, great TIB.
Yes.
Irreplaceable, great TIB.
Yes.
And finally, digital, great TIB. Let me, since we haven't seen this, let me apologize to you personally And collectively of your humble team, that somehow we came with into the war, But not into the ambush. We actually arrived in there at 10am this morning. When I was coming to TIB, I had to hire advisors On what to wear, how to speak and what to say. Interestingly, I was here in 1998 After we dropped the military out of power. And we had to celebrate it at no other cost for TIB. So I came here to tell you, to empty your daughter's wife, do well with TIB. And we were here to celebrate the whole of the military. It is 20 years after, this is 2018. We have forced to celebrate the town hall Of a dystopianistic, wicked and useless civilian cabal. Great TIB. Great TIB. I chose not to go to the University of Lagos, Where I was the player union president for two years. The reason is simple, I left the University of Lagos in 1995 finally. Traveled abroad in 1999, came back to the University of Lagos in 2004. Hoping that I would make the university in a progressive condition. I came back to the University of Lagos finding out that they were almost giving a million Months to wear as students. And I swore, great TIB, I swore I would never come to the University of Lagos to launch anything significant Until they get their hearts together. And I am not afraid or shy to say that we will have to get it together At the University of Lagos, but you guys have to be proud of yourself. You have always had it together. So, great TIB. This is the thought for independence in Nigeria, including on behalf of the political class. Where we fought for the military to be beaten out of power. We didn't break process with this event on behalf of the political class as well. That's why when they were taking decisions about how to take care of Nigeria, They never took a decision on how to take care of us, those who fought for them. In fact, they've done everything to leave us behind in their decision-making process. That is why in 2018, somebody will look at me and then you And tell you that you are in consequences. This happened here in your state a few months ago. But the good news was that, when that meeting happened And we had that radio show, previous company have watched it between myself And the Minister of this communication, uh, Shisua. I told our team that the transfer of power From the animal team of useless leaders Are just taking place to the digital era of the revolutionary nature. And they were assumed, although profanity, not that Joe Shisua would see his back. It didn't even take months before Shisua fell apart. But Shisua is not our problem. We have a very remarkable problem in the country. We have a problem that is facing us. It's such a way that if we are not careful, we are going to be wiped out of this country. If we are not careful, they will never care about us in this country. Because why? At the age of 27, somebody is looking at me And saying that I have no experience to be in Nigeria. When I turn around, at the age of 21, I was living Nigeria In the direction of progress and democracy as a student of the University of Lagos. And when we were dreaming, basically, gentlemen, All the people who are clearly to the politicians, they were hiding underneath their heads. Some of them ran away from this country. But the students of Nigeria stood up and acted, even in the presence of our parents, To bring about good governance, democracy and human rights in this country. Under our watch, under our oath, and our work, and our jobs, With the features, several military leaders in this country. I don't know if any of you knew that there was a time That to be a student of this campus, you have to pass at least two apple tanks And engage to get into the campus. It was a permanent station there. So that if you did anything in their view to disrupt the process, you'll get killed. And it is the reason why one of my greatest friends and revolutionaries On that that I ever said, Willa Lee, uh, Africa, was killed. Africa wasn't killed by us, as they want you to believe. They killed him because they saw his future. That he had become so revolutionary this young man that if they don't finish people like them, They will not let this political class rest. Before they did it to Africa, they tried it to be at the University of Lagos. I was attacked in a similar fashion By a coalition from hot gangs, police officers, civil defense. I mean, they have the DSN and these four different places, secret police, these other places. I survived, I was injected at the University of Lagos with unknown medical substance. But I have never affected the way I saw the future. I knew that one day, we would have to confront the shenanigans of the political class In such a way that we put them to rest and they found it retirement. And the test is staring us in the face and it's next year. Great TIB. Great TIB. Next year is not Nigeria's election. Election is just a process. Next year is our date with Egypt. Next year is our date with a revolution that will happen in this country. By next year, great TIB, is the time that something has to be in this country. As you know Frank Tana was saying, that out of the collective of stories, Every generation will discover this vision. And that will fulfill it or betray it. It is now up to you to fulfill the mission, to free yourself From a tiny, miserable minority of very, very addicted ambition political class. Or to betray it by collecting part of the crumbs falling off their tears In what they distribute through the election time. The one that has neither, or what they want to have infrastructure. The one that separates your destiny from yourself. The one that has your soul from your conscience. You have to decide if that's what you want next year Or you want a country governed by you. Because nobody would like you, the democracy we had in 1999 is not democracy. It's a moron democracy. There's a government of morons, by morons. And you can name them, all the morons that have been presidents since 1999, Starting from Baba Yarbo. There was even a time, the, the force upon this country in their time. For five months, Yaradwa was dead in hospital. And they kept saying that he's remarried. After that, the force upon us, a man who they didn't have a PhD For nobody to find, says this. And they came and did what the PhD of a national does. They came and PhD Nigeria. You know what PhD means? Like a cool name down. They came and cool down the whole of Nigeria. And after that, of course, killing, this is our ancestor. Nigeria is the greatest country in the world That is electing an ancestor into office. After the ancestor had been around for four years. Not only is he an ancestor, he's an ancestor of the dinosaur, you know, The one that affects sex. Yes, and you are learning from me, these guys have nothing of this. But not only are they asking you to vote for him, They are also pro and not a ancestor. Yes, and you know, who is on the agro- breaking and die. So on, they are saying to you that if the other one cannot lead you, They go their party motion, and this, the other one will bankrupt you. The age of these two guys combined together, the age of these two guys combined together, Is more than 48 years. More than 48 years. Nigeria is 48 years old. We have forced a country to theirselves to be most bold of people Who are almost twice the age of Nigeria. Great TIB. I'm telling you this so that we can break down to our link As for the reason why we must change direction next year. But you do not just have a regular candidate in front of you. You have one of you, you have someone who is going to fight for you. Because it's somebody who has always fought for you. And you do have always fought for me. My ladies was standing here, he didn't tell you that When I met him over at the airport, when he came to the US, I took him to my house, or whatever we were, I don't remember. And he said, ah, right now, I think we can stop thinking about Nigeria for a little bit. I need to read. And I said to ladies, they have just removed one subsidy in Nigeria. And he said, sure, what was your program subsidy in Nigeria? Are you buying it well in Nigeria? I said, no, as long as our people are going to be suffering, We do as long wherever we may be. So, as soon as it just disclosed, he said, okay, let's go for it. We entered into my car, put my laptop and some notes into it. Ladies, that was supposed to stay in my house, we didn't sit in the inside of the house For another five days. And that was the period that we had to go and hijack The town hall meeting and the privacy of internet Of a minister who came to New York, uh, New York because this. Great TIB, Nigeria students. I'm telling you some of these narratives, so that you will understand That the battle is not going to be easy. The battle we need to fight next year is going to require That those of you who feel that you are going to join the army Of revolutionary and freedom fighters, you need to join it now. And one of you who think that you are tired of fighting, Those are the people who reside, who reside in the reserve, You also have to go back to the battleground, where this battle of the wars. And this includes all our student leaders Who are out there thinking that, well, it's not the deep one, there's no time to look back. This is the best time in the history of Nigeria To take our country back from the cruel political cars That hijacked the country and make it impossible For us to experience progress and prosperity in this country. You know, they have always told you that it's not possible for Nigeria to be okay. In fact, they are vicious enough to tell you that there's not, there's not enough money To take care of things that we want from them. One of them one time in New York told me, When he came to attend an event in New York, and I confronted him. He said, well, the budget of Nigeria is not as much as that of the fire department in New York. So I asked him, a very much stupid question that he never answered. As anytime your budget is that of the fire department. But it's not fire ages in Nigeria. So in one year, if your budget is equivalent to that of the green department, But it's not tractors in Nigeria. Anytime your budget is equivalent to that of a university, If we, that's not a university, it's a good idea of the US. And I was thinking, I said, you know, sure, I didn't think about it that way. I said, of course, people don't think. But this is the time to force them to start thinking. But they are not going to be thinking about thinking or what to do. But we are going to force them to think about how to get out of the way. And for those of them who don't want to get out of the way, Well, it is not up to me, I am not going to celebrate or decide What will be the outcome of the fight that I didn't start. We didn't start this fight. We were generally, you know, attending university, doing studies, And we just asked to be given what we desire, they refused to give us. Our parents generally did, you know, work in the civil society. They finished after 35 years. They deserve pension and graduate, they didn't give them. Our people are generally sick sometimes, they need a hospital. They deserve doctors, they didn't give them. Our people are generally hungry, frequently. They deserve food, you didn't give them. Our young people are generally graduating from school, they deserve dogs, you didn't give them. Our students are generally also requiring scholarship. They deserve it, you didn't give them. So that the one who started the fight. And because they have invited us to this fight, we must fight the fight to finish next year. I have said it, great TIB. I am not apologetic about it. And I also want to tell you that, yes, some of you must have seen That there are other candidates, right? The first of them have seen other young candidates. But this is not about being young, right? Because we have a lot of young senators who are used to it, right? They want dancing around like a snake. Yes, you have a lot of young governors. Right, great TIB. You have a lot of young governors who are not paying salaries. So it's not about being young alone. It's about being responsible. It's about being capable, it's about being capacious. It's not about being capacious, but about having the capability To stand up to both local godfathers and godmothers And also international police, who might want to pump our way in the future. We simply have not had a leader in a long time. Or set of leaders who can deliver on progress to turn this country around. Ladies and gentlemen, there's nothing else that I need to say. I've seen the world, and it's not big enough on America or Europe. The only difference is that where they are supposed to build roads, they put it there. When they wanted to start the European Union, they didn't call anybody to limit it. In fact, they stole the area of the European Union from Africans Who were trying it in duties. But they decided that to do what Africans didn't do. They decided it raised Europe. So in some places, they were building tunnels underground, highways. They were redesigning their airspace. And when they were done, they finally went to the meeting and said, want to have a European Union. And as I was saying, because we are all linked now. But imagine that it will take you a season to get compared to London on Sundays That you get from Lagos to TIB. I spent six hours before on the highway between Bega and Mowee on my way to the meeting. I go to the meeting, I go to. Anybody who left for London would have arrived in UK. If they wanted to go to France, would have arrived France. If they wanted to go to Sweden, would have arrived Sweden. But what was different, leadership. People with the ability to take completely into the future. And you don't have to be a pastor for a man to see what you want for the future. It is a math, it's a function of planning, it's a function of commitment, It's a function of focus, it's a function of understanding and exposure. It's a function of internet. And I can tell you that our leaders don't have internet. A man who is looking for his wire certificate as of 6 years old Is not a man with internet. In fact, to make it worse, to now be looking for a certificate From the money that he not conducted his study exam. This makes it look like a giddyos. In defense of the political, for having, it wasn't wire that conducted for Harry's exam. It was conducted by every university. In fact, yesterday, they put it on their website, you can Google it and look for it. That is only, they are waiting for Mohare to apply for them to release the certificate. Why is then Mohare going to wirehead to look for a certificate At the St. Cambridge University in London? Considering the fact that the president is a regular physicist to the UK. As a matter of fact, I once saw them, I was actively at Sahari Brothers, That they can give me an authorization and a mandate To go to Cambridge University to collect certificate on here and bring it to Abu Dhabi. They never go back to the beginning. That shows to you that something's shady. This is that certificate, it's not that is not Mohare that is up there. Just as some people are letting that the man that is Mohare you have to consider Really hear it from me, because I don't know that is the truth. But something shady is going on, but it is the process back of this element. But what is what is this, right? We are being taken for fools. And there has to be a point, ladies and gentlemen, great TIB, ladies and gentlemen. There has to be a point, and I'm stressing for that we draw the line. We have to draw the line at that point now. Where we say to ourselves, enough is enough. We have to draw a line and say to ourselves that nobody In the history of this country will take us or granted again ever. There has to be a line drawn, very clear, a design, right? That you will never post for someone who doesn't know who's left from his right anymore. There has to be a line that will never post for an agro bar in this country again. There has to be a line that someone will not become the landlord of a ghost state When people in the state cannot even afford to eat. There has to be a line that you will never have to deal with electricity failure Again in a university in 2018. I was ashamed, I have to say, when I went up here. Because you know why a perfect university not here now, the university Should have solar panels on top of our UAB on right now. That is not only powering this or powering this half of the handful. That is the essence of the university. Yes, if you are not research enough to understand that if they have windmills, Windmills, and those mountains remind you. And solar panels on top of these buildings, the essence of electricity failure Will become the king of the past, we better close down the university. Great TIB, Nigeria students. But we are not closing down our university. We are closing down the political space That has robbed us of our dignity of 58 years. We are closing down the banks that laundered our future Into the hands of entities. We are closing down our roots that have become the place to die Instead of reaching a destination. We are closing down our hospitals that have become a place To man get consultation on how to be aware. We are closing down our schools that are teaching endurance instead of education. We are closing down our traditional institutions That are teaching us of sadness, but not giving us the dignity we deserve as people. We are closing down everything that is wrong with Africa's biggest country, Nigeria. Because why, the black race is looking up to us to get it right in Nigeria. Ladies and gentlemen, I may not have the opportunity to leave one of you again Uh, in the way that we are happening today. I don't even know if we survive this. But what I can tell you is that, tell me what happens. We must reach the promised land. We are not going back to their Egypt anymore. And I'm glad that you guys said it, that this is the Jerusalem of the struggle. And someone said it, that this is the maker of radicalism. I am telling you that until you deliver on the freedom that it was expecting You to deliver for, it can also be a binding of injection. And I don't think they want to see that. Great TIB, Nigeria students. Great TIB, Nigeria students. Great TIB, Nigeria students. You know, I couldn't do this without the help of our United here at OIE. Here in our true states, here in the southwest, and in Nigeria as a whole. We couldn't have gathered this number of intellectuals, patiently listening And following and applauding without a time. We have not paid anyone of you a goal today. In fact, since we come, we came in here today, I have not seen what has sad to anybody. But you are listening with ramped attention. You have shared where necessary. In fact, you have fooled because you have a reputation for dismissifying people at TIB, right? You even did it to Fela at the time. And that is why I like this place, because if you are not sure of yourself, You can't come to OIE to come and talk about the future of Nigeria. I do not imagine that Atifu will be coming here anytime soon. I do not imagine that Mohare will become a self, they have a parachute. Because last time, the last time one of them made a mistake And came here, that is Gbodjo Nata. He almost left in a body bag. So there are plenty there lessons. So we must keep this space, stand this up. You must continue to do what you do cautiously to keep sanity in Nigeria Until Nigeria becomes a safe country. But most importantly, for those who are not aware, I'll also leave you with the partial words of Bomali's redemption song. Which says that, must you pay yourself for mental state? No more but a stress can pay our mind. For how long, sha dey. While we stand aside. He said, no atomic energy. While we stand aside, he said, no atomic energy, right? I didn't hear you. I don't, eh? No atomic energy can stop the time. The atomic energy of sea and life will not stop the time next year. Because the next time is our time. Our time in the time of freedom and liberation. Great ife! Greater ife! Greater Nigeria students! Greater Nigeria people! Thank you so much for listening. Hope to see you in the new Nigeria next year, 2018. I'm Naiho. Take it back! Take it back! Take it back! Please, please, um, now we are relationship to go and ask. We got any question and answer, um, session now. And please, you let everybody to participate, like you have said, we have to emancipate ourselves from mental state. Please, let's have our seat. Please, let's not run out of the room now. Please, please, we are currently drawing to the end of the program. But we like to have the question and answer. And while we are preparing for that, we will be maybe recognizing some people.
Before we go into the question and answer section, we'd like to invite OAU Take It Back Coordinator, person of Jaiyola Mati, who also known as Senator Ma, the master student of nuclear science and engineering of OAU campus. So he's coming to give us the remarks. So while you get your questions ready, please, let us welcome Jaiyola Mati. A round of applause for him.
Of the greatest ife! Ladies and gentlemen, if you are living in a, your name is in half of the show. The question and answer session is where you have questions for the principal and is going to attend to these questions. So he can say it all, he can answer your questions, he can fulfill all your prayers. So we are going to this question and answer section. Wait behind, listen to other aspects of his personality. All of great areas by one's classification. So don't go yet the part of this second phase, thank you. Of the greatest ife! Great ife, don't read last now. Of the greatest ife! Please, let's sit down, colleagues. Let's sit down. Ah, we had a bookshelf from a, a ebulligerous sexuality, 2019 by Gus Grace, ah, Komre Shureg. Ah, but before the Western and the Western section, I want to specially appreciate our colleagues for three months will be plan, will be planning, ah, for this program. And this comments, this effortless, ever militant, ever totally comrades, you will be thoroughly behind this program. And a lot, a lot, a lot of motivations, respect, from our colleagues, from every different parts, ah, of our true states. But then, ah, we have, as we have rightly done, the presence of, ah, some eminent personalities here. We have the presence of Dr. Sumonu, Dr. Kedjari, a lot, a lot of Paul, and lecturers and, ah, non-lectural academic staffs who are here. I want to say on behalf of our colleagues that we sincerely appreciate you. Thank you so much. One thing starts strong, as we already have said, that the future lies in our hands. We cannot afford to go back to Egypt, never again. It's straight to the, ah, promising land of Israel. And so I knew that this is, as this, ah, program is, ah, very unique here. It is the, 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 the notion of OAU, ah, I mean Take It Back of Campus, Shureg of Campus. It's a different intervention entirely. And we, as radical as cautious as we are, we never went for the national to give us direction. We took step, we begin to map, map out different plans to ensure we gain. And when it has an unconscious, ah, OAU institute, very slowly enough, that there is a program, ah, to introduce what we call Shureg of Campus, a deep scholarship, and list many other interventions. We knew that as late as, I mean, all of the major problem of the youth, which is about seventy percent of the total population of this country, is a need to solve this. And also consider, but they are wanting to strategize and thinking, ah, different gimmicks, of course, positive gimmicks, to, to arrest their mind. Recently, we've admitted to different, ah, faculty heads to ensure we, we, we have a smooth map out of the plan. Very soon, all campuses in this country will be united with the initiative and everybody will carry the same mindset, a sense we are already. But I'm sure this fire, of course, is discussed so interesting that this driver is coming off of, ah, OAU, which is known as Opa University. Somebody, some people who knows, they don't prefer coming to Opa University, but OAU, Opa University, of course, would decide. We are testing national agents, even without, ah, without, without the pool to do that. So on, on this note, I want for you to notice to be conscious of, ah, different interventions that will be bringing up. It is only to bring our minds together so that we can consciously assess more need and the necessity to take this station back from the may of the whole UU. Greatest ife and articulate ife. I would not need the, we have also appreciations of, ah, important personalities, Dr. Agina Isadetron. Ah, you know, I wasn't so surprised because when I was walking down, eh, I was just every, even the middle office, they were just like, Agina, hey. It is, she's unknown thus far, for a long, for a long, for a long, for impact in, eh, in, eh, in consciousness, in supporting, I mean, in consciousness, supporting what will benefit the masses. And so we have many of these, and also, ah, our own MC. You see, to look at him, he was like, he's thirty, but Lord, I'm young. Dr. Wah is a diplomatic. Dr. Wah was the former ENSA president. Like a lot of nurses, you know, they just think it's about winning and winning. We need to take him back together. Dr. Wah was, ah, the former ENSA president and also the national, the former National Verbo Association. I mean, the president. So I really want to appreciate you for, ah, your, your solidarity and also concern to ensure that we have this successful program. I want to say on the last note, before the next agenda is handled, that greatest ife, if there's anybody, also please, that the hearters of this country or the status quo of this nation does not concern you or her, I want to tell you that you are part of what is still this country. Because if you take step right now, we can take this, can take this station back 2019. With OAU Shureg. And on the last, I will say, take it back!
Action!
Take it back!
Action!
Thank you, Asadetron Ma. We're actually going to the interactive session, session. So we have questions, we have answers for you. Um, so just, um, we're ready with your questions, the mics and the, um, usher around the pool, right? So before we do that, I have to go to Dr. Okijari and Dr. Sumonu to give a couple of two remarks before we go to that section of the program. Thank you.
Greater Nigeria students! They just, they just, as we are hungry or hungry or hungry. Greater Nigeria students! Um, I'm Mr. Azai. I'd like to, from what our community has just discovered us, I have two questions. You may not answer immediately, but pardon our questions and do the need for. How many of us have our BBC? Number one. Number one, and I see for the fact that it is not enough to share Shureg here, only for you to do your voting on your Facebook and your Twitter 2019. Share yourself. How many of us have BBCs? Number two. Shureg invited to speech everywhere in Nigeria. But how many of us are ready to go to a period's back room? Tell them all that they are so diverse now. And to get them the way they should be educated, enlighten them the way they should be enlightened, and guide them to take the right decision on the election day. And like, eh, like our address said, if you do not vote, you automatically lose your oral rights to complain against a non-functional government. So in other words, if there stands, go for me. We got it drunk again in 2019. And you do not vote, or your, your vote was supporting who you do not vote for because of me not. Please shut up, don't complain, suffer and smile. We must part of this long debate. If we are not enough, it is enough. Enough should be truly, truly, truly enough. People are suffering in Nigeria. We cannot continue to count on sufferings. Let us get our decisions on time. Let us bring out solutions and solutions and, and, and. Our inclusion zone in 2019 will determine what happens to Nigeria thereafter. For those of us who have benefited from the pros, let me tell you, a capricious does not want you to die. He does not want you to enjoy this evening so that you can continue to serve him. All of them are capricious. So if that is unfortunately now, on somebody we can come to question, somebody we can boost their praise. In this tiny room, still sitting in the office, I was like, Shureg, that icon that she saw. Please, let us not lose this opportunity. I have my resignation during this protest contest. I think I expressed this in a forum last week when my project held a symposium, which was like a wake-up call for this whole campus. Great ife, don't forget, it's the just for the citizens. This university is stupid, like any university campuses in Nigeria. It's been a party that has thrown a symposium last week and people were in the justice department in Ife. Ife! There were lots of struggles in those days. Hasu, Nasu, Sanu, nobody was talking about symposium. Nobody was so excited. So that was where my central project will arrive. Let us accept it. If we agree that we have suffered enough. If we agree that we need freedom from this attitude. If we agree that we will put a stop to the rule of the humans and the animals in our days. Please, let us reinvigorate this movement. And the simple reason is that Shureg and I, we had yesterday and the other week, and the other week, on the joint services. For those of us who are proud, I hope we, hope we will go to here to be part of this movement. So that we can, we can, we can, we can, and we can, we can, not for anything. I mean, some of us have had the opportunities to bring, or anything, that would, then. But when you want to. Your pool was so, was so little, it's hard. So for that, let us make sure that we sustain this culture of enlightenment. You don't need to campaign, but when I don't need to campaign, just let us continue to enlighten Nigerians. Campaign as the normal or less sadistic basis in Nigeria. Any position that campaigns is just doing the irregular thing that they have always done. Just let us continue to talk to ourselves. Nigerians rarely need to be emancipated. Finally, I was executed, if you want that, you say something here. Bring them on the demonstration of the masses. The questions I had, and I've not found that, are the masses ready for emancipation? I stop on that.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, thank you, thank you, Dr. Ah, Dijari. We call upon Dr. Sumonu, the president, chair, man of the organ, thank you, sir.
Greatest ife! Greatest ife! Articulate ife! Ever conscious ife! Ever dynamic ife! Greatest back back! Greatest o-o! Greatest o-b, greatest o-b, greatest o-b, greatest o-b, greatest ife! The future belongs to those who believe in the beauty of their dreams. The youth are in the majority. And we have to believe in the beauty of our dreams of a better country. I want us to take this belief into actions. We have to be part of voting. We have to be part of decision-making. The politicians, regular politicians, use us during elections and they lump us afterwards. So these are what I want to get hold, that we are no longer youth and dumb. The future belongs to those who believe in the beauty of their dreams. Catalog, go back to Shureg's action, go back to Shureg's past and see that this man means well for this country. We have to believe in him, we have to support him by voting, by being part of the chain to take Nigeria back from the hands of those that sold it into Egypt. Greatest ife! Articulate ife! Take it back! Take it back! Take it back!
Thank you, sir, thank you. Okay, uh, yes, we're going to do this in, uh, series. We're taking five persons to talk at a time that, uh, please try to answer the question at the same time. Okay, so, um, if you're here and want to ask a question, you can please, please, just raise your hand and let the usher give you the mic. Uh, one question for that, I do want to recognize a club worship aspirant of the AAC from Odostes. He's a contestant of Odostes on the AAC by name engineer Akewade Laosso. Please, now he just right up and wait for the others. Also, I'm honored to have him here, thank you, sir, thank you, thank you for the opportunity, we appreciate you. Also, here is, uh, his deputy, the deputy general candidate for AAC, Osho Odostes, the president of Alaka, Basas, Owo, thank you so much, thank you, I'm here. Okay, who is number one? All right, a usher, please, can you get the mic? All right, we're going to take us to this video first. Okay, so head up, let's now the mic for them, we go like that, then we take it to AI, to the, to the brother. All right, we're going to have ten people coming up, let's just have them out, what have us, so those ways I have it done. So, um, let's have one person from that end. Okay. One, two, three, go down. Okay, four. Okay, five, six, seven, someone from that end. Okay, three, seven.
He called us, he called us. He called us.
Okay, 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 come, come. All right, all right, okay, okay, we have to be very short, please. Everybody have only thirty seconds for your question, okay, let us have here. Please, there's a question for you, thirty seconds for your questions, please. Make it brief, very, very fast, okay, let's go ahead.
Um, sir, I want to ask. My name is Tywood Olaf, Tywood Olaf. And my question is, sir, what makes you feel that? That you are different from all of that normal countries? For, for example, like the last meeting I had, what makes you feel half that, um, um, vibe, that habit? Do you know that?
All right, all right, please, not to, 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 don't give them the mic, just put it in their mouth.
Good afternoon, I'm right. My question is this, I get a list, a list of the number of contestants for SED and House of Lords. And when we look at statistics, the AAC has led than twenty century experts, led than fifty House of Lords experts. And this, and I want to ask, the Nigerian political system is organized for that people doing the politics in their own area. Due to the fact that they want to achieve their own political, eh, agenda. I, I, my question is this, how would this not affect the chances of your party emerging? Thank you.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, my name is Martin, just let me be ladies. And I've been asking you occasionally, like, knowing the last official state election, we could
Good afternoon, sir. Good afternoon, sir, my name is Matson, just maybe you believe this. And I've been asking you occasionally, like, knowing the last official state election, we could see what happened. And how everything was totally dismantled. I would like to have that, are we going to handle such a case like this, if after voting for you and if it's stressing our effort to compete for you, things like this you have done, okay, thank you.
Alright, um, my name is Elia. My question is, we all are aware that there's a problem in this country, which is the problem of statistics. We all know that there's no algorithm that are consistent after this country. And we also know that the way that it was used in US, how that fact became the truth to be used. Now, what my question is that, what exactly are you doing to improve our data accuracy in this country? And not just that, there's problem of electricity, which you mentioned also. Please, can you just give us a little tip of how you intend to solve it?
Thank you so much.
My question is, come on. I would like to read, I mean, what is, but with your thought, I'm very, I'm very, it's what you have said. My question is. My question is, I, I can be a five point. If you are right, I'm about to ask you. For my question is, do you think you as a president and the likes of Bokola Saraki as senior president, do you think it will make any difference? Yes, that might be, are you saying the father of corruption, like the likes of Obasa, your IGD, and like, are you changing if you are, if you are.
Alright, thank you. I'm not stopping, allow the person to respond and we will go ahead and express a set of questions, thank you.
He's letting it down, he's letting it down.
Good afternoon, my question is, I trigger to your 100,000 Naira minimum which plan. Does he think that a lot of the goods and road of cities in Nigeria are not locally produced? Most of it are imported. By the time you raise the minimum price 100,000, people start buying a lot of imported consumer goods. And these ones are going to be. So how do you plan managing the challenges that will come in this home winning agreement? Also, I want to raise that, much of what you said today is what I have done and what the president asked for Nigeria, I think. He said very little of what you are going to do for this country. And I pray, I hope to work on it as time goes on, thank you.
Okay, now, I want to say one question. So in the other three questions, leave the best of the question, don't give me any question, don't give me more questions, I will go on everybody, thank you.
Alright, thank you. My name is Moses, and I would like to ask a question about the repair of the concrete, we know this country is standing on internet. And then if I have to repair the concrete, we need some contractors, and most of these contractors themselves are corrupts. That they said, they give them money to repair something and they use them and pay it once, because Mr. Solo, he can't be there to monitor every project. And then the question is, who are the contractors to be used in the repair of the concrete and what?
Thank you. Say freedom.
My name is Adolde, I'm here, thank you, this is my question. My question is, based on the principle of separation of power. When you were talking, I believe in one thing, that the singular Messiah can never change the goal of this country. And based on that, I believe that if after the membership of your party does not actually represent you, and never be sent in and left. I don't know how you intend to actually know achieve some of your policy. Because the system itself is corrupt, and I believe that even if past the way to contest as the president of this country, the system will even indict all the actually negative people. So I believe that if after you actually want to, you'll achieve all this, I believe you intend to actually go about it with your singular law policy being attached to that, thank you.
Good afternoon, sir. Good afternoon, sir, my name is Tiyoyu Samoni, again. Sir, I want to ask, are we going for presidency or working for revolution, thank you.
My name is Tetsuori. My impression is just about the fact that you have a lot of young aspiring presidents right now in Nigeria. And all of them, they are having a very, very nice mentality, very, very good spirit that wants to change the country. But now, politics is a game of numbers. And now, imagine that every, about 10 of you have divided your votes into different percentages. There is a likelihood that they're still going to be a very, very bad government. So what do you think about managing all of this here then? And adding something I can add here?
Good afternoon, my name is Oli Kitaolo, I'm here. Yesterday, we see the Martin Luther King of our time who has given us the emancipation proclamation. But my question is, how do you intend to reach those in rural areas? How do you intend to reach our mother and father, that whose voice can be bought? Those who don't stop, the next, those who don't watch television, those who have people that follow their television in their homes? How do you intend to reach, that's my question.
Uh, my name is Oluwani Shalama Eko. Um, I am waiting for the sound of the news that I'll be to speak my mind out. Actually. Sorry, my question is, my question is, how do you intend, I mean, as a, as a student, like I graduated from this university, how do you intend, um, giving us an appointment? I don't understand, because I can't, I can't believe my.
Alright, um, my name is Luqosuludai. My name is Luqosuludai, I would like to know, sir, um, how or where do you think, uh, that was, that is give us a sector by sector breakdown. Of when you think the current political class have missed it, and how you intend to do something differently when you get there, so we can be more confident, and we can actually solve our problems.
Good afternoon, sir, I'm, I'm a Michael, I mean. I want to know what are your plans to resuscitate the deteriorating economy that we have in Nigeria?
Uh, my name is Olae Vionte. Uh, the question I have for you is, what are the realistic measures that, or should take it back, exactly have in choosing to take it back? Like, for example, we are in electoral, what's just came here to tell us, and what others will come to tell us? Now, what do you have to work for, what do you have to do? Because like a lot of time, we are saying, okay, but okay, and I've had people in administration, see now, and even in your present articles say okay, what's happening here today? So if you find your president, what are you, what problem exactly you want to solve in your game?
My name is Tito, I believe you are an economist. I want to ask a question, I thought I wanted a question, but because of the time, I don't have time, I need to talk to the boss. Now, you use more 100,000 Naira in the minimum wage. Nigeria does not have a problem of minimum wage. The problem will have an economist that we have a powerful integration. If you put the money in circulation, we can afford an increase in production, in inflation, and that's what we are, we're telling them. So how do you manage, if you put money into circulation, we can afford an increase? In production, now, classical economics, new economics, we get it, we, the legal economics have a ready. There's no way you can have money to capture this, you can't afford it, it's a problem, thank you.
Pulu, 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 pulu. Good afternoon, uh, this is our president today. Um, according to one of your question, you said you legalize cannabis. Yeah, now, I want to ask, Africa is a moral continent. We are very moral in Africa. Now, how do you think to balance legalization of cannabis and other aspects of life, especially in Africa? Because all these, um, things, they, they influence crime rate and stuff like that. So how do you intend to legalize it, um, balance, balance these with moral in Africa?
Alright, um, good afternoon, um, Hope Taka Kenech, good afternoon. Yes, I have a question for you. You actually are coming for, um, most of thinking back to the nation from the capital. Actually, very hard intention of thinking back to the nation, um, thinking back to this nation from the hand of the corrupt, on the show. But one thing is this, we have to know that the greatest kind, the greatest program is mission in this unity, tribal, tribal, um, tribalism, to the most nice. So how do you get the capitalist, Japanese kind of attitude between our Nigeria and Nigeria? What are your plans for to define this mission to build a standard of what we want as one nation for the program, so we have a goal?
Good afternoon, my name is, um, when the doctor said, send him over to the, the school, close to the. Nigeria has the more, more, our school children. So according to the demographic health survey, 2019, Nigeria has a 2 million children out of school. Now, the most significant of those that are in the South and East and West, says that Nigeria now has over 3 million students out of school. When you become president, what is the plan of training? And concerning the training period, over 3 million Nigerians walk abroad, and if you abroad, what can you see or what can you do when you become president?
Good afternoon, I believe it's a very good idea. Sir, once you also be telling us you met a corrupt economy, as some people have been saying before. And what will you do to resuscitate our economy for your presidency of president, thank you.
My name, my name is President, my question is that how this people in this, your, eight, eight, back, uh, movement? Especially the fact that we still have policies for fundraising in Nigeria and it's still going, having been so well up in your society, there are some people who are restricted from voting, from, so, answered their polling duty. So I want to ask, how this people in this movement, so that.
Good afternoon, sir, good afternoon, good afternoon, everyone. Uh, my name is Sosivaya, um, we know that, um, those one candidates runs for, um, an election. For the youth, we understand that there are plenty, um, presidential candidates who are youth now. The question is, how do you intend to manage the diversity of votes that comes from this order, young presidential candidates? Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Fala Inresi. I pray that we win this battle together. But my question is that, what, um, on the long run, the battles is difficult to win. As in, during the election day, I want you to promise us that you won't defect and disappoint your supporters. I just want to promise, at the front of everybody here.
My name is Noah, how do you, you, are you two stick of president, president of everything to rule Nigeria?
Take it back. Well, I, as the person, I believe in Omoyele Shoroure. My question, I understand that you're being hard, but my question is this. We believe in Shoroure, we want him to change Nigeria, like all of all the people that. My question is, we know, we know, we know what all the data that people have. Very soon, campaign is going to start. My question is, what is the plan for connectivity of this party, of this movement? Do you think that was Shoroure, and we must look up to any other person now, actually move this movement? So that our, so that our belief will not be forced short.
Uh, thank you very much, Omoyele. Uh, my question is simple. I believe all politics is local. We are in OAU, presently, we have a broken presidency on campus. Problem is that, some students, they are such a strong going on, but some students are presently in class, only classes. And I think, uh, the fact that, as we are used to the, uh, the, the, the best, uh, union, when it comes to the natural, uh, in Nigeria. And the fact that now we're here, we have, uh, a striking broken, we are, I think, is need to address it, uh, by the president. Also, the point of politics is, which is the force of the strike itself. I think all of the struggles we have in the terms of increments in view, especially in one, on the end of our, the introduction of the spectrum era at the College of Sciences. All of these are the things that the president have granted the opportunity of this event to please address. I would like to hear that, thank you.
Um, thank you very much, my name is Olola Faye, good afternoon. Before I post this into my question, I would like to leave an observation I need to leave. And that's the fact that, Omoyele Shoroure could be the first presidential chairman. Originally the first politician on campus that will willingly give room for students to ask questions without being bothered. And I think that's the community. And that, that would have been possible, even because of your history of family and your participation in the United Union. And in that line of direction, I would also like to show you, with the, um, audience president and also Omoyele here in Shoroure. That presently, we have the time, where even our university authorities don't let people with the same opinion. As I am speaking to you, president, my vote are for that of this guy standing behind you, at the block. And when we went to the, when we went to the university office to seek the reason for the block of, uh, for the blocking of the border. The response they gave to us was that it's a man for the reason of, it's a man for our identity. And I don't think in any society, if we are shit, that we provide anything for the identity. That aside, I think it is also necessary to state that we are the, um, today, uh, I think, I know yesterday, March and last year, when the union was here, it was strike by this, um, national federal. And when you wanted to defend it, they, they said and they put, that it's not prescribed to union, you only spend their 50s. As far as that is concerned, the union will be prescribed. In fact, it is a ridicule on the collective intelligence of over 3,000 today. It's really, that the national federal, so I would like, Omoyele Shoroure to give you those opinions for the presidency to have respect.
My name is Jerry, I want to ask you something very important. Um, as the presidential experience, you understand that, um, past my place as the president, uh, the rumours went to the west, that, um, the western state. How much was your plan, um, managing the, um, rumours, rumours of the issue of the west? And is how you connect yourself with our western government, not, um, affecting your own markets? They are indirectly ruling you, because you have to sign some things with them, it actually give you, it actually, uh, that, I can't say, you and you and the rest, I mean, I, I am body. Yes, now, secondly, I want to ask, um, I was a farmer, and I want to ask, what plan do you have for the culture in this organization, in this country? Because you understand that, all it has made us, what plan do you have for the culture in this country? Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, I would like to start with that this question, quite cool, quite funny on stage. I want us to know that this movement is about.
Good afternoon, everyone. Of the greatest effect. Um, I have two questions, first of all, I saw a Britishman shaking a Nigerian hat at the back of a vest. You may so, I, I need a simple explanation of that, because this British are the ones who criticize us, they are enforcing our government, even to this, so I don't really understand that. And second of all, how do you feel the generations that believe in Nigeria, John W. Justice? I want you to share more like that.
Please, the last question, please, the very last question.
Thank you, I greet you all in the house. Um, once again, I will thank, uh, Mr. Shoroure. Uh, thank Mr. Shoroure for this, uh, mind blowing movements of, uh, emancipation. My question goes to the audience. In future, we are here because of our future. We are here because of Nigeria, we are in Nigeria. And my question goes to the audience, Mr. Shoroure, that are we ready to take our future back? Because we are.
I give you this one. This task is before us, uh, after my show.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Alright, okay, now, before I hand over the mic to, uh, our principal, I don't want to say this. This movement has the validation in that, that as many states and 30 states in Nigeria, and as many local governments that you can think of. All on the website, and people are protected up there, and get my permission about the party. Now, this is not only about this principal, Omoyele Shoroure, it's about everybody, okay? For one, anyone who is confused on this program, I bring my local organization within my company, it's in, it's in this place. Everybody here is challenging you to join that movement, it's not only about, it's about us. It also does right now that if I not succeed the promise done, for that value that is not going to that promise, that he going to be waiting for it, without seeing the promise and what they got into. Some people challenge you, it's not about you and asking, how do you do this? How do we do this? How do we, the friends and family that manage to manage everything of yours, that class strength, the presence of that session, the local government, area you control, how do you go there and mobilize? Now, people have the best of body, we fly, we go to topics of fire, we fly, now, do people know in their location? Moving and pushing this movement, so it's not about Omoyele Shoroure, it's about the, it's about our future. You have to not be the president, the leader of this movement, and we are happy to have it as a role within the corner, to communicate and local community. So I'm telling everybody, don't say it's him, how you doing this, how we doing this? He has stayed out the conversation, stayed in honesty, he has said that they are dead, that is forgetting, and I totally wish I had, thank you. All of our partners, our customers, Omoyele, you guys, the doctor for this question, thank you.
Greatest effect. Where's the microphone? Greatest effect. Uh, you guys managed to ask me that one question. And I looked at all the questions here, there are no options, I was hoping that if you asked me that with one question, would be multiple options. So that I can choose A, B, or C. But I'm going to address this, thank you so much. And I should say before I start that, this particular event is being likened to the whole world. Our movement is a global movement. Nigerians across the world are interested in what is going to happen in Nigeria next year. Nigerians across the world are interested in what is going to happen in Nigeria next year. So, as you guys probably heard, there was an online voting that happened a few days ago, last week. And we won our party on that online election by eighty-one point three percent. And that tells you something, that people are watching and paying attention to this. First question here, you say, how do you feel like a different from the other candidates? I will start by saying that how many candidates in Nigeria today can stand in front of great affair without being afraid of what to say? Being afraid of how you react? That is the starting point, that I feel connected to you because you feel accepting of me. One, my friend, is that I have done this, ladies and gentlemen, standing up for this right for thirty good years. Since nineteen eighty-nine, when I became a student of the University of Lagos. And what was a problem in nineteen eighty-nine? It wasn't a bigger problem than this. We had to keep the military out of power. We have to bring, or we have to bring to Nigeria a democratic era. And in nineteen eighty-nine, you know how old I was? I was eighteen years old. I'm now forty-seven, I've been fighting consistently for thirty years. How old is Nigeria? Fifty-eight years old. Out of fifty-eight years, I've been fighting for thirty-eight years. And you can take the rest of twenty-eight years away from it. It's a period that I'm planning, I was probably planning in the other world, to fight for a better Nigeria. So, you cannot find many candidates. With due respect, ladies and gentlemen, great Nigerian students, who have fought consistently for what is right for thirty years in Nigeria. You can't find other candidates who fought Babangila. You can't find other candidate who went ahead and fought Shuleka and helped to pull out his internal government. You can't find other candidates, even though some of them are in their seventies, who have fought to bring about an end to the Abacha regime. You can't find so many candidates who fought during June twelve, even though they were my age, some of them at that time. You can't find any candidate, or so many candidates who fought in nineteen ninety-eight in the Luka Games to fight for the restoration of, restoration of student unions across Nigeria and also the restoration of student leaders, particularly the former student activists at Obapembe Global University. This is two of basically, and to the fact, who were invaguously resident as students. You can't find so many candidates today who fought against fourth term. You can't find that many candidates who fought against Yeradja Kabak. You can't find that many candidates who set off a website to fight a rottin after twelve years for every corrupt Nigerian leader, from local government ministers to presidents. You can't find that many candidates, ladies and gentlemen, who have demonstrated integrity over time. A candidate who you can look at and say, this guy must sell being out. Or we can't correct money from the way, we do the other way. That is what stands out. I tell you that, and the fact is pain, with due respect, that we have to be explaining why we can make Nigeria like that place. For that, we have done for thirty good years. If I was in the civil service, I would be retiring by now. Probably I would be paid my backless, right? But I'm not coming to you with any sense of entitlement. On the other side as well, I have studied very hard and obtained a master's degrees. And it's some kind of intellect, right? It shows that we have exposure, it shows that we have capacity. I'm standing in front of you here, I have not written anything down, a set of questions. And I'm standing here for hours and engaged in interacting. That is the kind of people Nigeria should have, you know? Somebody once asked me, oh, you know, that starting to, Nigerian needs are Obama. I said, with due respect, Obama cannot survive Nigeria for two weeks. If Obama should stop between there, eh, and Lagos, by road, we will not sit up for another two weeks. You can't happen here. Obama cannot survive so many of the things that happened to us in the last eight months. We started campaigning in town. So, we start now, there's no question about it, it's for you to decide whether you want to go with the go-getting ones, or you want to go with the other ones. Somebody mentioned that A A C have only twenty senators, fifty reps in the upcoming election. You should not forget that A A C is barely two months old. Our political party was recently established less than two months old. So that we don't have twenty or four senators contesting is something that I should to show to you that we have been doing our homework well enough to be able to identify who can represent us in the senate. But let me ask you, do you know of twenty senators in Nigeria that really are fighting for you? And then of the twenty senators in the senate, who is going to be the leader of the Nigerian people? The answer is, we know. So, if we can even get into the national, I mean, senate, twenty people with conscience, this country will be a different country. The Nigerian senate is a retirement home of thieves. And if A A C can get thirty of our conscientious citizens and comrades, it's not the senate. You will have a different senate, there's no question about it. If you can have twenty senators in Nigeria fighting for you, your life will be different at senate. If you can have fifty reps, and if I ask most of you, if you know the name of your reps, you probably don't know them. Because they are only doing for collection of advantages and oversight function, which is an extortion of ministries, department and agencies of government. So, if you can have fifty good senators, I mean, twenty senators and fifty hundred rep members, after being established in two months, you will see a difference. But let me tell you, what is needed in Nigeria is the president of Nigeria that knows what he's doing. The moment the Nigerian president knows what he's doing, the moment the Nigerian president start working for the Nigerian people, the difference will be clear from the morning. I want to ask you, do you know any senators in France? Probably not. Do you know any senators in America, except they do Google? You probably don't. Countries don't elect senators to change their fortune. They elect presidents to change their fortune. And the moment you have a president that is willing and ready to work for the progress of a nation, that nation will experience the kind of progress that you have never seen before. If you have problems with your senators after we become, when I become president, you can recall the senators from the senate. We almost did it in the home of life, right, before, I like, oh, moving. We need a good president and a big land to size. And Nigeria will experience progress, prosperity, and peace. And development that we never seen before. Top question here, I thought about Oshun State. You see, in Oshun State, I will say this, I blame the people of Oshun for what happened in Oshun State. I blame them first and foremost before I blame anybody else. I also blame them for two same candidates that do not inspire. At the end of the day, in Oshun State, who could you have voted for? Between a dancer, you know, and another one, who is probably like, you know, a pastor assistant to a man in Lagos. There was, there was something inspiring. But most importantly, you had the right for you let remember to want it into office. And I'm sure that at the end of that election, the dancer won, yeah? Yes, there's no question about it. But it was also the people of Oshun to ensure that, who, the person who won the election go up to become the governor. But when people go to sleep, you cannot blame them for it. And I hope that in our own time, next year, young people will be beginning to know, not only to ensure that you vote for the right person, but you stand your ground until that person is declared the president of the Federal Republic of Nigeria. Until that is done, there will be no peace. If that is clear to the preference of my elections, there is no way anybody will tamper with your choice. And that is where to put it to you. Now, this is all about you, and just one person. You are the one doing the voting. I'll be voting as well, and I'll start my gun, and I hope all of you will stand your ground. We have done it before. We voted for a man, in Nigeria, I believe, they cancelled the election, we stood our damn duty. The military was picked out of power for making that fundamental mistake. Even to today, anyone that was associated with June twelve did not receive any respect of the Nigerian people. I know of a guy, I think his name is Canu Opalai, the, that guy can do what plays, one five zero man for Abacha. Till today, the guy has not recovered for betraying Nigerian people. So, let your guy and ensure that, remember we vote for will become the president of the Federal Republic of Nigeria next year. Somebody was asking about stats and data. Now, we have data. The truth is that we almost have too much data to work with, right? You look at it as certain ways that Nigerian societies collecting data. They are collecting your data through immigration passport, they are collecting through INN. There is national identity card, means there is an M T A and all the home companies collecting your data. Ah, the driver's license people are collecting your data. The B P L by Max. The problem is that we are not putting all this data together, synchronizing them, and using them for the purpose for which people use data in other countries. Of course, you cannot have people with analog brains managing digital data. So, until you have digital AI of very large processes of data. But when we become the power, the way we process data, because there's plenty of data in town and we arrive at this by having one single point of data edge and usage. And that is the national identity number, I N I N. Every owner data will be relevant to that data. And more than that, so somebody says, as president, do you think we can handle O B J, Babangila, and all these people that have stolen our money? Yes, of course. People have been saying to me, oh, don't say what we do because this is who will go and ambush you. No, we have been very clear about the future we want. Because for Korea, since Korea can get where it is today, they had to deal with some of their past criminals, right? Many countries in the world, there is no limitation status when it comes to crime against humanity. I would love to ask the person who killed the Idi Amin and get that person in jail, even if they have no money to live, right? I would love to find out how they dealt with our twelve million dollars from the government in nineteen ninety-one. And depending on this in possession of the money, when it comes to the tragedy, it's that money. If you are still collecting Abacha's money and loot, why you not collect Abacha's loot? Abacha just stole after Abacha now. Babangila stole before Abacha, it's loot, it's loot. And we are looking for the collecting loot from the person who died and we live in loot with the people who are alive to be tormenting us. I mean, you can have a Tuesday and clear about this. I don't know, I allow the judicial process to take its course. And if we find out that somebody stole twenty years ago, forty years ago, it's affecting you, it's affecting your rights, it's affecting your health. Even the contractor who was giving the contract to this road. To effect, twenty years ago, and we have the people our money under the road, it is not better for us. When are we speaking, you know, in town, when it comes to collecting loot from people who are alive? But do not speak with some people who want to collect loot from people who are dead. If we are getting Abacha loot, which we are able to collect, Abacha will do too. Hundred, nine, a hundred thousand naira minimum wage. Let me tell you, I am not talking about minimum wage, I'm talking about living wage. Living wage is the amount of money that you take home after you work for a month. And the money can take you home and take care of your basic needs. And that's what I propose. But before we propose that, we have done our research and found out that Nigeria can afford hundred thousand, you know, four hundred thousand is? Hundred thousand naira is equivalent to three hundred dollars per month. In Turkey, yesterday, the president of Turkey announced that every four day, I hope he ate or sixty five, we will receive in six hundred dollars per month. They don't have to work, that's coffee. Turkey, what's it, they are back here, right? They don't have oil, they have free medical care for the aged as well. So, if you are paying workers three hundred dollars per month, is that a bad thing? But let me say to you, I've heard people claim that they study economics, saying that they will cause inflation. But what is very annoying about the economist in Nigeria is that when the government increases scope is, they don't work. The one they did in Laute last month or so, two hundred and fifty thousand naira per student, is that one not going to force and robbery? Because how do you expect the parent of a person who is receiving thirty thousand naira per month to send their child to Laute to repay for their behavior? Where are you at? Economists, where are you when we need you? I would rather see you when you save paid workers, hundred thousand naira. The same economists are not questioning why senators are taking home less than seven million naira. That is the salary of two thousand seventy-six Nigerian workers in a month. What senator takes home the salary of two thousand workers? That one doesn't cause inflation. So, you can't find economists that are... Every senator. The Nigerian people. Every Nigerian senator also has got five workers. Each of the workers receive monthly at over eighty thousand naira. One hundred naira. Then you add over, how many do you have for rep members? They are also entitled to all kinds of apparatuses. And you go for the N N P C. There is nobody in N N P C that is taking home less than a million dollars per year. And then they are stealing it for awarding exams, all kinds of practices, including traveling abroad, when they don't need to travel abroad and they collect extra goods. Nigeria is serving the British. It is time for Nigeria to repass its laws and start serving the needy. You cannot expect people to leave off of thirty dollars, or that eight dollars a month and give you a world-class zero salary to receive yourself. That's what I pointed in the Nigeria Democrat Congress, that they are negotiating for peanuts. But you know why, the only reason why they are even negotiating for thirty thousand naira is because we put the minimum wage issue on the front burner. We challenge them, and they are using our position to fight for minimum wage. But the last thing I'll tell you, do you know that a few years ago, minimum wage in Nigeria was equivalent of fifty-six thousand naira? Let me tell you, economists, we talk about it, they will go and visit their grandmother, their mother. They will go and give money to, somebody to buy shoes. The shoemaker will be happy. Everybody's part of the local economy energized and incentivized more. Contractors, somebody mentioned contractors. You see, Nigeria, there are differences between contractors. Those are builders. So, Nigeria are dealing with contractors, we have to get rid of contractors and start hiring builders. Free seat for a separation of powers. That guy who has a person and is studying too much of government. I love it. The level of representation of any political party in Nigeria doesn't represent or mean that they will separate from power. The current government, the all progressive Congress, or all past criminals, as a lot of all the of present criminals, they have more senators in the senate. But they don't see eye to eye when it comes to issues, they are all taking care of themselves. They have more House of Rep members. They have more House of Reg Members in the House of Representatives. But does that translate to development? No, because you have people who are driven by greed. You need to elect people who are driven by vision. And when vision meets action, nobody can stand in the way of progress. When the president is punished, I want to deliver a high review. Somebody asks, how do you manage the standards of the contractors? If I'm president of Nigeria, and I give you a contract to do in part of Lagos Expressway, until that thing is done, I'm on your neck. If I ask you to do the one in hand, Nigeria is not that big. The president has walked through nine presidential jets and two helicopters. What are you doing at night? Why don't you go and visit contractors and make sure that, I mean builders now, and make sure that they are delivering on the project that they promised? That is the job of the president. But you know what our presidents do and our governors do? I have seen the governor of my state is inspecting uncompleted projects, and he's still coming back to commission the project. In fact, sometimes they will commission half of the projects that is uncompleted. That is not the business of a governor or a president in commissioning project. When the project is completed, the people start using it, that is the commissioning of the project. As president of Nigeria, I will never commission a project. But I will ensure that every project that I start will be completed, and the people can use it and decide whether they like it or not. Uh, if one guy asks if this is a fight for presidency or a revolution, I'll say to you, whichever one comes first. If you do a revolution, it's even better. If you get a presidency on our side, it is a revolution that will happen to Nigeria. There is nothing next year that can be acceptable except a revolutionary direction from Nigeria, change of direction. And the moment you get the presidency, you will see the revolution in next year. There's no question about it. You can already feel it, right? You can feel that revolution is coming, like, like a woman, they used to say that there is a natural mystic in Nigeria. You can go a reference of the lyrics, it's not, uh, you can feel it. So whichever one comes first, if it's revolution, unhappy. If it's the presidency, you will be happy. Uh, young candidates and divided votes. There's no division of those among young candidates. And I have studied before, in fact, that a young candidate doesn't mean that he can do the job. A lot of young people in government today, who are fighting against interest of young people, what we have said is that when the time comes, there will be a separation between boys and men. And there will be even further thought, the difference between men and old men in Nigeria. So all of the young candidates that are saying who are there, some of them, with due respect to them, they entitled to fight for the office of presidency. You cannot just say that, they must join us. But I think it will be very clear to a lot of people very soon who are the new candidates in this race. Even already, without much of work being done, without the private jets, without the massive rallies where the brave people with rice and agara. Yesterday, this day came out with a quote, that there are eight strong presidential candidates. And they gradually gave us number two behind Artikoo and Baban Gida, I'm sorry. It's a slow between Artikoo and, yes, that's Oharri and Artikoo. But we know that in the consciousness of our people, we are number one. Women, we know, who was in our eyes. Uh, somebody said it was a mass nation program, which I agree with you. But hardly attempt to reach everyone. Reaching everyone is the job of everyone. If you have heard us today and you are convinced, call your mom, call your dad. Tell your roommates, tell your girlfriend, tell your boyfriend that you heard a guy came to my school, he spoke, and there is hope, and there's brightness for the future, and I want you guys to follow him. This certain is already happening from our police abroad. Our brothers and sisters, our brothers are taking a position, most of them, that it will not be sending money to any member of their family who is not putting for the right candidate next year. I didn't, I didn't force them to do it. But that's how passionate a lot of people are. You see, how did you care about Batuta King? Somebody told you about it, somebody talked to you about it. You weren't there when you was fighting for the rights of class. But see, this must correlate to everybody, and it is everybody's job to ensure that we do that. Uh, employment, we have plans to employ five million people within the first four years of coming to office. How do you want to do it? By way of providing electricity, we will push it from three thousand megawatts to twenty-four thousand with a combination of solar, wind, gas, biogas, even the dung of cows can be used for biogas to generate at least one thousand megawatt of, just dung of cow. Dead can be used for that. So we just need again, digital wired brains to tap into the opportunities that are limitless in this country. And we hate ourselves if we don't give ourselves this favor next year. We cannot continue to vote for people who are dead and expect us to have life. It's not possible, it's true, it's not possible. You guys, we want a sector by sector break, and I don't have time today, but you build our website. We have broken down what we want to put to every sector in ten places. We call this Pista piece. Security number one, power, electricity number two, infrastructure, anti-corruption, economy, restructuring, health, education, agriculture and tourism. We are going to be doing all of this together at the same time. And now we increase the production capacity of Nigeria. Let me tell you, oil is an obsolete commodity. The real future of Nigeria lies in Nigeria's young people, our population. Seventy percent of us, very creative, very energetic people who are out there, just waiting for their talents to be discovered and tapping to, and the great prosperity erupts. Unleash yourself, unleash yourself from next year. That is what China is doing with their population. That's what India is doing with their population. But in Nigeria, our population is a liability instead of being an asset. We should change that. Uh, I'm back at it, how do we plan to resuscitate? I didn't write down resuscitate. They just talking resuscitate the economy, it's production, production, production. But I tell you, one first thing, right? Is that, as I mentioned, this president is between production of electricity and infrastructure alone, there are over three million jobs hanging out. Just to put together solar panels, and the farmer's camp also, you can hire over twenty thousand people. And you know the effect in Nigeria? The moment someone has a hundred thousand, it belongs to another twenty or twenty-five people. Because here, we are a family, you know, we have a chain of reaction of wealth. The moment a person is wealthy, uh, everybody in the family somehow gets something out of it. So that chain reaction will affect a lot more people. What do you need as this campus, for example, with nine megawatts of electricity, which has not come solar, you can power not only the campus or the campus? What am I telling you? Is that the university, the African University, don't need to invent it, pay water or bread, as they do at universities of yours. If an academy is selling electricity to the whole of your fair, it will get digitalization also, the president. I will make it happen now, we will turn the universities into research and productive centers. One of the things that have ourselves the most, do you know, intellectual property? When the business can invent things there, they sell it to companies, and companies somehow give the university a lot of money. The endowment of Harvard University is bigger than our so-called funding reserve because they are selling grades there. They are not selling darling and grandsons. And that's what a university should be about. I have quoted, how do you want to be realistic? How can we be more realistic than this? Telling you, breaking it down to everybody's level, how to take Nigeria to the next level, inspire and moving them with all the best inspiration that is possible. So I will handle one last thing. Because I've been told that I can't answer all the questions, too many questions, and some of the questions, I think I've answered through what I've got to. And the issue of cannabis. Yes, I know some of you are very interested in cannabis. Yes, there is no intention of my class, is what I said, to legalize cannabis. What I have said, which will require some liberal framework, is the export of cannabis to the rest of the world. And as of today, Canada legalized cannabis about two weeks ago. They are short of cannabis, seventy percent short of cannabis that they need. Nigeria's cannabis grown within a forest that is lying between Omo States, it was called Obese in Omo State, Quade in Neta State, Akiti State, and I think Edo State. They grow enough cannabis that will have supplied Canada for the rest of their life. So instead of burning cannabis, we burn one point five trillion naira worth of cannabis every year. Instead of burning it, sell it to the people who want it. But cannabis is not the moral product that you are discussing anymore. It has become the new oil in the world. In fact, in Nigeria, they sell cannabis oil, they call it CBD, for just a bottle, it's twenty-six thousand naira. Yes, it kills all kinds of things. The most people have been on here, you know, they do that. Cannabis is a beautiful god out there. But you know, the same people, the same people that are condemning cannabis, there's no cannabis here. Pastors, judges, they all have cannabuses and wash. We can find cannabis wherever you want in Nigeria. But nobody has taught them of packaging it, and selling it, and making profit of the others every year. If you can make four billion dollars every year from cannabis, Omo States, Akiti State, and those states, then as a money to go to Abuja to beg for the monthly allowance that is required in Venus. In fact, they will be able to invest it to make their countries, I mean their states, become independent of the federal government. Maybe from there, we can start to post it, the responsibility they are having nothing about. Because knowing you have economic power, you can structure it however you want. But if you are here in Oshun State, and all you have is spirituality. Don't go to it. And nobody's thinking about how to grow the economy. You are not thinking about products. You are not using your universities to create products that can compete globally, and you are burning the back of cannabis. I'm sorry for you, you just need to hit Google and save yourself of the ignorance and embarrassment. Los Angeles, America has started to legalize cannabis. Ghana, it will be exporting cannabis very soon. A lot of countries are after how to use cannabis for medicinal purposes. And Nigerian cannabis, by the way, is the best. New world, the Chinese government for it. The people, the members of the Chinese government for it. It's called cannabis satire. It is best in the world. But if you are not careful, they will tell you that it is the worst because you don't get it on time. Ladies and gentlemen, great people, better and better people. One question I will say to you for those of people who are asking for student union. If you want student union, go and create it and enforce it. When I was at the University of Lagos, the school authorities said they prospered the student union. We said, that is your own grammar. We organized ourselves to move on the student union beauty, we operated from there. My car was Aluta O O one. The vice chancellor's car was UniLand O O one. Even though the student union car was not as good as the vice chancellor's car, to show to him that my student union used to park my car close from his car in front of the senate building. And nobody there tow my car, even though it sometimes only have brakes. And sometimes just to embarrass them, I will bring the car when it has oil leakage problem. So it will leak oil, it runs, the vice chancellor's office. And they will say to us, come and take your car. I say, if you don't want the embarrassment, replace the car. So please, ladies and gentlemen, you are old enough to go by yourselves. Don't be begging school authorities for student union of the car. That is what's giving them the privilege. If you want to stay here, organize yourself, organize the student union in the airport, organize the student union parliament. If not depressed, unless somebody come arrest you. You are the owners of this campus. The university professors and senators are working for you. You can try and use the rights of your campus. And I want to hear you say, stop calling this student union. So that they simply know they are small, but it's too many of you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody. Free card, free cards, free card to everybody.